January eighth, twenty twenty-five, meeting of the Davies County Council. Good morning and welcome. Happy New Year to everybody. Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible and every being justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business today is election of officers for the county council for twenty twenty-five. We have two positions, a president and a vice president. I'd entertain nominations for the office of president of the council.
I would like to nominate Marilyn McCullough for office of president.
Marilyn McCullough has been nominated. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike Sprinkle. Any other nominations?
Move nominations be closed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Congratulations Marilyn.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the office of vice president of the council. Are there any nominations?
I would nominate Tony Denson for vice president.
Okay. Tony's been nominated for the vice president. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike Myers. Any other nominations for vice president?
Move nominations be closed.
There a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike Myers. All those in favor of Tony being vice president, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Same sign. There it is. Congratulations. I guess one other business I have, let the record show that council members are all present with Darren attending by Albert's call. Marilyn?
Thank you and welcome to the first meeting of twenty twenty-five. Also want to give a shout out to the county and city workers who've been working on the roads. They've been doing a tremendous job. We had a lot of snow. They've been working a lot of overtime and we really do appreciate them. So they've been doing an excellent job. Meeting minutes. You all should have those in your packet. Did you have a chance to review those? Are there any changes or look for a motion to approve those?
I'm making motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Matt.
Second.
Second by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Also have a conflict of interest form that please stick around because we'll need to complete those after the meeting. And contact information form that we've been sending around to make sure all your contact information is correct for the upcoming year. So you'll need to sign before you leave today on that as well. We also have a big list of encumbrances. These were all that, they were already in the twenty twenty-four budget, but we're having to carry these over to be paid in twenty twenty-five. You look through the list, there are several departments that have those on there. They total one point eight million. Do we have any questions on any of those?
On the commissioners fund, the two hundred and sixty-seven thousand capital outlet, what is that? Oh, maybe, okay. And I think another big one is the bridge, Bridge one fifty-five, two hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Yeah, and so for, with some of that, for those encumbrances, as long as we have a contract in place where the invoice, that money then can be carried forward to take care of those matters. So that's what that was for. Chris has encumbered that money so it don't have to be re-appropriated this year.
That was my only question. There's several bridges with the two big dollar amounts here. Probably nobody knows which bridge is one fifty-five and one sixty-two. All right.
I don't, unless Gary would happen to know, but I, or Mike, Mike. Yeah, I don't know. I'll tap my head.
That'll teach you to come to council meetings.
If there are no further questions, I would make the motion to approve the one million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents in encumbrances for, from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mike Sprinkle's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, we have the confirmation resolution for the Kratos project. Grant, do you want to address that, please?
I'll just, have some time that we have. Okay. I'll just give a few comments and I'll ask you guys to come up if you'd like to say anything. This is the third step in the process relative to this abatement. Initially presented in November and then it was discussed at length in December. The confirmatory resolution you have in front of you as, as an exhibit, the percentages, which I understand that, that to be the preference currently. Obviously, if you want it to be different than that, it can be changed. But the way it reads, it would go from a one hundred percent abatement and drop down ten percent per year for ten years. I'm gonna go ahead and pause and see if there's anybody that wants to speak to this because they saw it advertised in the newspaper and wished to comment at a public hearing. Yes, we'll open the public hearing and close the public hearing. Do you want this red? If you like it red?
Is that necessary?
It's, it's not necessary, but I'll go ahead and, and, and walk through it here.
Okay.
On November the thirteenth, at a public meeting, we received information regarding a tax abatement from the subject company, Kratos Defense Security Solutions, Inc. Such information is a part of this request and is incorporated by reference. And I'm gonna pause. That, that's important because we're, we're making this abatement promise and we're, we're granting this on the basis of information that's been provided us. Whereas the Davis County Council, Davis County, Indiana, did on December eleventh, twenty twenty-four, adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash five, designating an area therein described as an economic revitalization area pursuant to IC code. Whereas as directed in the resolution, notice of the adoption of said resolution and all other disclosures required by Indiana Code have been duly published in accordance with Indiana Code five dash three dash one. Whereas, as appears in the records of the council, no remonstrances or objections have been received. Is that correct? We haven't gotten any pushback? Okay. And the council now having considered such resolution and having heard evidence thereon and being fully and sufficiently advised in the premises, therefore be it resolved by the Davis County Council. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash five, adopted on December eleventh, twenty twenty-four, designating the real estate located at sixteen, six thirty Innovation Drive, identified as the certain parcel numbers as an economic revitalization area, is hereby ratified, approved and confirmed. The real estate described here, owned by West Gate One, and the improvements in personal property associated with the operations of Kratos Defense are hereby confirmed to be an economic revitalization area within the meaning of the Indiana Code. The owner of the real estate and the tenant, Kratos Defense Security Solutions, Inc., shall be entitled to deductions for a period of ten years for real property tax, ten years for personal property taxes in accordance with Indiana Code and attached Exhibit A. The deduction shall apply to the improvements in equipment described in the application and accompanying statement of benefits, including manufacturing, research and development, logistical distribution, information, technology, equipment. The auditor of Davis County shall attach the approved abatement schedule to this resolution. As I mentioned, there's an exhibit here. Pursuant to Indiana Code, non-compliance is waived in accordance with the provisions set forth in Indiana Code. Approved by this council. Only change I would have, I mentioned I want to change the resolution number. Five dash one.
Thank you, Grant. Are there any questions or comments for Grant? We need a motion? Yes, we're looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve the confirmary, conf- carry on, whatever it is. Formulary resolution for the Kratos project going forward with the standard ten percent tax abatement per year over a ten-year period for both real and personal property.
Motion made by Tom. Do we have a second? Second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Next, we have the salary ordinance amendment. We had, there's a couple of these that were just being amended from the three and a half percent in that original budget going to the four percent, which was approved. But we also have some others here. The assessor, the thirty-five-hundred certification, we had approved that based on the certification levels of the individuals in the office. Merit corrections. We have a couple of questions on that. Do you care to step up, please? Thank you. Are you creating some full-time positions or you're just moving some things around?
All right, so the full-time position that was in our budget has been in our budget for the last three years and it was never filled. The O.C. didn't give us any more money. At our advisory board meeting in December, we looked at all of our P.I. funds and we felt comfortable enough to go ahead and fund that for a full-time position. I had originally put it in there for forty-two thousand, which was the starting for a new case manager. And the person we ended up hiring, she has experience. So I think it was last year or the year before, we had talked about people that didn't have any experience. We would hire at forty-two and the people that did have experience, we'd hire at forty-four. So I was just moving some money into that to adjust to the forty-four thousand.
Any questions?
You want me to talk about my other stuff while I'm up?
Yes, if you want to, if you want to go ahead and do that, yes, great.
So that would be in the transfers. Our full-time administrative assistant, the second one that we had that got the job at Crane, she left and so that position was open. We ended up just hiring a part-time person instead of a full-time position. So I was just transferring all of her salary out of that line item into our part-time fund because that's what she's gonna get paid out of and that kind of adjusts for throughout the year. Or now we have four part-time people working for us. So just wanted to make sure I had enough funds in there. And then on the the small amounts, like the three hundred dollars from insurance to travel, repair and maintenance. And there was an additional appropriation. That was just to make my budget what it was originally approved as. And some things got cut out of that and I just needed the numbers to match. So I worked with Jen and we figured out an easier way to make that balance so I didn't have to appropriate for each of those individual line items. We just transferred some and the only appropriation is for the repair and maintenance with a hundred and one, hundred and ninety-one dollars to even out my budget to make it how it was originally approved. Any questions on any of that stuff?
Thank you.
Very much, Laura. Appreciate it. Kelly, could you come up and kind of go over some of yours, please?
Morning, councilors.
Morning.
Morning.
You want to start? Me to start?
We, just wondering about the extra funds for the immigration clinic provider.
Yes, I came before you all, third quarter last year. This is, I think I explained it on my request. We'd already turned in budgets for twenty-five, so this wasn't included on our twenty-five budget. I was gonna come back monthly and have our revenue appropriated to then pay Dr. Holzopple. But after conversing with the auditor, it was better we do anticipated for the year and that's what this is. And it wasn't in my budget because it was already after all those deadlines, budget had been put in gateway.
What's the, what is the Dr. Holzopple's base provider fee per each physical?
We charge three hundred and fifty dollars per. Three hundred goes to the provider for all of the span of services and fifty dollars we keep at the health department for administrative and overhead.
And Dr. Holzopple's the only one that does these physicals?
Correct. You have to be a federal qualified civil surgeon.
Who sets the price?
We do. Actually, the commissioners did. It's on our fee schedule.
I'm sorry, I missed that last part.
The commissioners.
The commissioners.
We have a fee schedule that the commissioners approve every time we fluctuate our fees. Comparably to other clinics and civil surgeons, we're, we're on the very low end. Bloomington charges five to six hundred dollars, I believe, and Evansville as well.
How long does it take to do one of these physicals on the average?
Well, generally we, he sees a patient twice and it's a lot of paperwork, so about two to three hours.
And when you say there's twenty-four appointments a month, are some of those, those same people coming back for their second appointment or is that new people?
They're, they're usually new, but we do have some returning based upon what their blood work or tests returned. But we are, we are basing that on full capacity for the year. Right now, he has clinic this month and it is booked. So if he, if he isn't booked, we don't have that maximum, obviously that money will stay in the budget and go back to cash.
And how many hours a month does the health officer work?
Well, that fluctuates. I mean, he is our exempt department head ultimately, but he has tuberculosis clinic where he sees patients. He has immigration clinic where he sees patients. He's in our office overseeing our vaccination clinics. I talk to him almost every day in some capacity.
I'm, I'm, I'm just looking at the thing and thinking, wait, I don't know how many days he works. I thought, I thought at the compensation committee it was five days a month, but maybe that's not right.
For this particular clinic?
No. In, for the county.
He, it fluctuates depending upon number of patients. He is physically in our office once or twice a week and on call for a host of issues.
I'm, I'm just looking at the revenue generated from this thing is significant. I mean, he's, his health officer's compensation's twenty-two thousand a year and now we're gonna be doing immigration physicals and eighty-six thousand dollars a year on top of that. Is that, I mean, that's how I'm reading it. I don't know.
Um, that's up to, for the services provided, correct.
And Tom, to Kelly's point, just to point out that whenever she came to me and questioned about doing this clinic, she was wanting to potentially do this monthly based off of services and I had suggested to go ahead and do this as a lump as they had, were doing per year, just so it helps with the paperwork. So just because they are asking for it, it may not end up working out that way, correct, Kelly? It just depends on the influx of how many people they're gonna need to see in our schedule. This is a maximum at this point.
It is.
I'm just looking at the estimated, total estimated compensation. And then, I mean, if that's right, eighty-six thousand plus twenty-two, I mean, that's how I see it. That's what we're projecting.
Projecting. I mean, his base salary is for health officer what it is, but he also does provide clinical services outside of that.
And where is the clinic, the immigration clinic?
In our office and exam room, too.
So we have, we're charging three hundred and fifty dollars and for using our facilities, county facility, I guess, we're getting, we're, I don't know if we're getting it, but fifty dollars you're saying we're getting and to do the physical is three hundred for the physician.
For the physician, correct. We provide a vast array. I mean, this, this past year, my twenty twenty-four revenue just for vaccines was almost two hundred and fifty thousand. So we, we take in a great amount of revenue for a lot of different services, including these specialized clinics for the community.
I've got one more. Is this part of the Indiana?
No.
This is actually county, county.
It's in eleven fifty-nine. We, we, this revenue goes into our health eleven fifty-nine fund. Most all of our revenue does. That's why we maintain a cash balance in eleven fifty-nine.
Okay, so the fifty dollars will stay in eleven fifty-nine, you're saying? No.
No, all end of the health. It's a tax living.
Fifty dollars is going in there.
Any other questions?
I don't have any more. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to explain that. What have, there was one more on there that I had a question about. On the encumbrances. Or not the Indiana.
And the appropriations.
Yeah. Thanks.
Most of the others were three and a half to four percent.
Oh, that's the one I want to see, yeah.
Um, we, so that, that was in health eleven fifty-nine. Health First Indiana's Fund eleven sixty-one. I think there was some confusion when our salaries in that fund were approved that you couldn't approve it possibly because they're grant dollars. I just have to submit an updated budget to the state and I needed the staff to be at that four percent.
That's what that is. So then we adjusted those.
Um, the same for the LHD school liaison grant, that's Fund eighty-nine fifteen. Those salaries were also adjusted and there is one that is outside of that point five percent. That was a three-year budgeted line that got moved or shifting some salaries together and it was then cut, so I need to put this back into the budget. It was, Dr. Holzopple wanted, you recall, three supervisors to be paid at the same salary and we put those in eleven fifty-nine. That wasn't approved, so I need that placed, I need that restored. And that has been budgeted the last several years. The grant money.
Are, are all the associates in the health department receiving a four percent increase?
After this, yes.
Okay. It was, some of them are at three and a half and this is correcting that.
Correct.
Okay, nobody's getting more than four percent?
No.
Okay.
No. Uh, that's all been calculated to the four percent. Over and over and over.
Your grant is eleven sixty-one, right?
The grant is eighty-nine fifteen. The Health First Indiana funds are eleven sixty-one. Don't consider that a grant.
It's state funding, really.
It's state funds directly for health, correct. And that budget, even though I have to submit it to the state to make sure it fits all of the service requirements, it fits the split of where money can be spent, then I submit it to the county and the county can adjust that accordingly and then I have to send it back and make sure it still fits within the service, so. And actually, we're gonna carry over, I don't have the final number, about a hundred and twenty thousand of these funds from this, from twenty-four to twenty-five. We will have some funds left over to your report. We intend to spend it and you'll probably see me again.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand carryover. So the receipts, is that what, we already got, is that for the whole year?
We get it for the whole year.
Okay.
On January one.
Well, basically that nine hundred grand, you distribute evenly or whatever you need throughout the year.
Correct.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kelly. We appreciate it very much. I think that addresses most everything in those additional appropriations. They totaled a hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars. If there are no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve those. Tony?
Second.
Second by Mike Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then we have some transfers. The assessor's office, this is what we discussed earlier for those certifications, moving from one account to another. Also, Laura addressed the change from the clerical assistant to part-time as well as moving over to repairs and maintenance and travel. I would look for a motion to approve those transfers.
Additional appropriations we're working on?
Oh, no, we went through that. We approved that, so now we're down to the transfers. Oh, salary ordinance. I apologize. Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve the salary ordinance amendment. Matt, and do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Tom seconds that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So we've covered this salary ordinance amendment and the additional appropriations and we were looking for a motion down in the transfers from one account to another, which we basically talked about those.
No move, Marilyn.
Thank you. Mike Sprinkle, do we have a second?
I will second.
Second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Did we miss anything?
Nope.
Okay. We also have information in your packet on the ECH reports as well as the airport reports. Any questions or comments on those? Any other matters that the council would like to bring up? Okay, and I was gonna ask for the. We do not.
We have a retiring employee, Connie Engelhart's leaving us after thirty-six years of service to Davies County. So we have to replace her. So I submitted a request for additional appropriation to pay her her benefits that are pending per the county policy. He has committed her claim for the three hundred and ninety hours of sick leave, she's, or sixty days. She's actually got ninety days worth of sick leave that she's not used over the years, so.
I didn't hear that last part.
She's got ninety days accumulated, but the policy she gets paid for sixty.
Okay.
That claim per the, is all per the policy. So it has the sick time, vacation time, some comp time that she's entitled to per the policy. The other request for additional appropriation is to, for funds to a temporary court reporter training line item because we're bringing in a new court reporter and we'd like to get her in. Connie's last two weeks, Connie's last day is January thirty-one and we're gonna get our new court reporter in, which is gonna be Bonita Mattingly that I borrowed, I'll say borrowed, from the clerk's office. Bonita used to be, Bonita's a paralegal. She's actually started with me a hundred years ago when I was in private practice. Worked for Judge Savec in his private practice, went to Department of Child Services for many years and was supervisor there and retired and then was hired in the clerk's office, so she's got great experience and was interested in the position and we're lucky, lucky to have her and have somebody so quickly, actually, so. Connie's been at it for thirty-six years. She's been in the prosecutor's office with me. She's been in the clerk's office. She's been a court reporter for me for the last fourteen years since I've been judge, so we're gonna miss her. She's done a great job. You know, I think the thing is she has a, a personal decision for her and her family. She's decided that it's enough and this temporary situation that we're going through has been, been tough. And after thirty-six years, I think she thinks it's too much. Also, the criminal docket that we've picked up, we brought over three hundred and thirty-five cases from Superior Court to take on. She's been helping with that or referee's helping with that, so that's an extra workload and I think she's thinking that's, that's just enough for me and she's decided to hang it up, so I'd like to get her taken care of on that appropriation and then the training for the other person.
So basically, Judge is here today just to kind of get a soft approval or go ahead and get a motion toward this. Due to the timing, the appropriation is not actually in your packet until next meeting due to the timing that we have to submit to the state. So he's here just describing what's going on, but he's, we're needing approval to, potentially for him to get this other person trained for the last two weeks that Connie will be in so that they can start that transition.
So the only action we have to take today is the
So the only action we have to take today is the $2,300 one.
For what's on your additional appropriations has been taken care of, but the other stuff will be on your next agenda. We just need to verify that you're, you're all okay with what's coming down the pipe on, for our next agenda for them to have two people in there as this training's going on, as Connie's going out. And it's, it's temporary. It's not a full piece of that, but we just want to make sure everybody's transparent in what's going on and what's coming down because it'll take place before your next meeting.
Right.
Hey, I move that we go ahead and appropriate the $2,372.49 for the training of new court reporter.
And Jen, is that, are we creating a new line item? Because I can't remember if we had one.
Correct. We'll have to have a new, different line item for that because I can't pay the same person, two people on the same line, so we'll get that taken care of and, but with their approval, we'll get it created and then we'll be able to backdate it in the next month's piece, but yeah. We'll get you the information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Second.
Tom made the motion, Mike Myers, second.
Second.
Oh, Tony Dungeon.
Oh.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
I have a final question.
Oh, yes.
From county employees who've been here for many years, are there limits to what people can?
Yes, in the policy handbook, it states a maximum for the payouts. And for sick time, you have to have worked within the county for more than 15 years. So, and then there's vacation, you can get paid up to 20 days.
But that's it? Those are maximums?
Those are maximums for sick and vacation. If comp time is accrued, we have in the policy handbook that once it reaches 80 hours, that it is asked to be paid out.
Asked to?
Due to the financial burden that it can put on the county.
And if I remember, and I think maybe Mike was the only other person on here several years ago, when I, when I first started, it was a lot more generous or unlimited. And there was a change to the county employee handbook several years ago that kind of put some limits on some of those. They used to be a lot bigger.
Yeah.
So when the judge said she had 390 hours of sick time?
Right, and like he said, with a sick, the most we can do is the, the max of what per, is in the policy handbook, she's going to lose per se some of that because she has overaccrued what the maximum is.
Down to 90 hours, right?
It's 60 days. 60 days is the max for sick payout. And some people do build that up for the fact that if they have to take FMLA or something, it can be a help to them, so. But she, I think she had close to 90 days built up, but she will be losing around 30 hour, or 30 days worth of time for sick that she's built up because of her time spent with the county.
So the appropriation that he submitted originally on, by email, is incorrect, you're saying?
It's correct. Yeah, her payout, everything, we, through payroll, we have double-checked the numbers and it is, it is correct.
Well, it's got the 390 hours on there, though.
390 hours is based off of their six and a half hour days, probably equates to the 60 days. We have to look at each department and hours and do the differential in math.
Okay.
And the comp time and then at that point has no maximum?
Correct, to the extent of that it is asked in the policy handbook that it is paid out after, once it reaches a maximum of 80.
Because we've got a lot of new folks, why don't we go ahead and send that to them just so they've got it and they can look what those levels are? Because 10 years ago, approximately, we updated that because we did have this as an issue, but we can always look at it again for.
And the commissioners are in the process of, we've started the process of a handbook revision, so it's in the works, so.
Any other questions? Anything from the audience today? If not, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Go a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?